We will go ahead and get started for the day two of the 2021 budget workshop. Today, I just want to say that when you speak, please get a little closer to your microphone. I watched some of it back yesterday and a couple of folks couldn't be heard very well. So when it's time for you to speak, pull your microphone a little closer to you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sarah.
All right, welcome back for day two of our budget workshop for fiscal year 2021. This slideshow is available online on villarica.org on the finance page under budget. There is a link for yesterday's presentation and now a link for today's presentation. Real quick, I wanted to just kind of share the schedule for today. First, we'll talk about some of our primary and secondary goals for the city. Then we'll be talking about growth, millage rate, possible cuts for this year's budget, and then we can address any questions. With that, we'll get started. All right, first up, we wanted to discuss some of the primary goals that we think are happening right now in the city. Number one, and this has been talked about for a couple of years. Our source for the city, as we continue to grow, our water plant will not be able to, even at, on a perfect day, we would not be able to produce all the water we need with our current permitted amount at our current water plant. So I know since the very beginning, Tom has been on the hunt for a new water source for us.
How's that coming? No? Okay. Scratch that one off.
No, we'll talk about it.
Okay, number two, Mira Lake Connector. Been working on this for a while again. This could be potentially one of the TADS that Tom has been working on with a consultant that is like the TAD guru in the state of Georgia. Again, that could bring not just physical connectivity, but community connectivity for us in Villarica, connecting Carroll County, Douglas County, connecting the older part of town to the newer part of town, et cetera. So we feel like this is very important for the future of Villarica. Going on is our second industrial park. So obviously, we have one, what is that, on the northwest side of town? This would be on the more southern part of town. I believe it would require annexation. Do you want to talk anything about that right now, Tom?
We'll go back through these.
All right, so I'll just go through these. North bypass, obviously, we've been working on that for decades. That is a big time goal for us. Pumpkin Town Road, getting that fixed is a primary goal for us. And then water treatment plant, which kind of mentioned at the first one. So primary goals, any questions on those?
Oh, she said any questions?
Yeah, you're going to have questions for sure about all of these.
Okay, next, some secondary goals that we have is, I put City Hall here, but maybe municipal complex would have been a better description. That is something we would like to move towards. Butterballs, we discussed a little bit yesterday. Golden Nugget Trail, obviously, that is something that we have talked about for the last couple of years, but that's a million dollars a mile. Avante reuse, so the potential for using the Avante building as more of a retail area and finding another place for our public works departments. And then lastly, soccer expansion, which I think we talked about yesterday as well. All right, growth, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been talking about the only way that we are going to grow out of our water and sewer issues was to grow. And we were pleasantly surprised when we pulled these numbers the other day. So in 2017, number of customers we had was 6,300. You see that on the left. And our average monthly consumption was 35 million gallons of water. By 2018, we had grown 150 customers and our average monthly consumption had grown as well. But we were really great, glad to see in 2019, our number is already up to 6,700, 6,731 customers. So you can see since 2017, we have grown, what, 430 customers? So if we can continue that, we might stand a chance. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Tom. Wanted to talk about the Douglas County Water Sewer Authority Agreement and what that means as far as annexation and also the Carroll County Water Authority Agreement.
Just keep going, we'll come back and go through all of them individually.
Okay. So currently, our Douglas County Water Sewer Agreement is $4.85 per thousand gallons. In order for us, we have not used that since the agreement was done. In order for us to use that, we would need some significant capital investment on that side of town. And just want to point out that $4.85 per thousand gallons is a greater rate than what we charge our customers. So if we were to have to move to using their water for a significant portion of our water source, then again, we'd be paying more per thousand gallons than what we're charging. Now currently, we have an agreement with Carroll County Water Authority that is beneficial to us. Currently, the rate is 2.37 per thousand, and that's only until March 2025, so.
You didn't, you didn't update your chart.
I'm sorry?
I'm not, okay, it's going back, there you go.
We're good, okay. However, what they've come back to us would be a proposed rate that's similar to the Douglas County rate, which would be 4.85 per thousand gallons.
Let me ask you a question on, so you've pointed out multiple times, and so it's time that the new rate and the Douglas County rate, the proposed Carroll County rate and the current Douglas County rate is more than we charge our own customers. What is the rate that we charge our own customers? Do we know that? You can come back to it if you don't.
All right, for the first, so we have multiple tiers within our structure. But for instance, if you're a residential customer within the city limits, you pay 3.47 per thousand gallons.
And but now, so it tiers based on the type of service, so whether it's industrial.
So the first 2,000 gallons, they pay 3.47.
Okay, so it's tiered within the res- within the residential?
It's to promote conservation. So then the next tier, 2,000 to 10,000 gallons, which is going to be where the majority of our customers are, is 4.23 per thousand gallons.
So it's 4.85 versus 4.23 for the vast majority of our customers?
Correct.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, so again, just want to point out that if, if we make a new agreement with Carroll County and that is the rate that we have to accept, then we would be paying more per thousand gallons than we're charging our customers. So all the work that we have done in the last three years to get ourselves to positive cash and being self-sufficient within those enterprise funds, trying to point out that that would go away.
The candy bar.
Yes, the candy bar. We'd be back to where I'm handing all candy bar, saying, "We bought this candy bar for a dollar and I'm only charging you 75 cents for it."
That's a leaky bucket.
Back to the buckets. All right, so just wanted to kind of refresh everybody. In 2017, Raptellus did a rate study for us and they came back and said, this is on our volume rates, not the base rates, but on the volume rates, they came back and said that we needed to increase our volume rates for water by 21% and our volume rates for sewer by 75%. Now again, thanks to the council's hard decisions there in 2018, 2019, we adjusted those significantly. In sewer, I'll go ahead and start with that. We adjusted it 35% in 2018 and 30% in 2019. So the cumulative effect of that is 75%. So we have done the sewer, we have done what the study said for sewer. We have effectively raised that 75%. We haven't quite done that for water yet.
You said it, the cumulative of those two add up to 65, you said, how's that equals 75?
Well, if you, so if you raise it 35% in 2018, then in 2019, you raise it 30%, you're at, your, your, your rate was already higher because of the 2018 increase. So now we're in, you know, it's a compounding effect.
30% of 35 is 10 and a half.
Okay, so say down.
We've actually raised it 75 and a half percent.
Same thing on the water, huh?
Well, no, but same arithmetic, but we're not there still.
Right?
5% of 7 is .35, so we've actually raised it 13, or 12 and a third percent.
So we haven't quite done, yeah, what the study said for water.
But I thought we were doing good with the water cash.
Yes, we have made the, you know, we have gotten the fund to where it's no longer negative and we have made the fund self-sufficient. But when they were, they were projecting out decades for us and we were looking ahead of what the bond payment is doing and what the capital needs will be, this is how they came up with these numbers.
There's not a water cash, there's only a water sewer cash, right? So we did all the, we did all the increase on the sewer, primarily on the sewer side. So the whole fund has gotten healthy, but the water side, we're, we're still below market.
Okay. All right. Okay, millage rate, so we talked about this in the public hearing the other day. Our current rate is 5.743. We advertised 6.5 and the budget that was presented to you shows a 6.25 millage rate.
Okay, I know that the 5.743 will give us an extra 365,000. What does a 6.25 give us?
Well, let me show you. So the value of one mil is 700,000, the value of a half mil is 350,000. So yes, there is some growth from 5.743 last year to 5.743 this year because our digest grew, so the value of the properties in Villarica grew.
We ran that calculation, about 365,000, so what is a 6.25, what does that give us?
It's an additional 350,000.
That's where this calculation.
It's roughly a half a mil.
It's on the next page.
Yes.
Oh.
So the growth, I want to say it was 324,000 was the growth from the digest to keep the same millage rate as last year. And then to then increase it to 6.25 would be a half mil, which on the slide shows you 350,000. The next two slides, wanted to talk about what the possible cuts could be for general fund because we presented you an out-of-balance general fund. All the other funds have been balanced at this point. So some of the items that are in there, first one would be in butterballs, that's a million dollars. We added that into the general fund. We do have a $100,000 contingency in the budget. We do have community grants of 20,000 in the budget. Those are the grants that the council has historically given to some of the community groups when they are holding a festival in town. We didn't use that this year because there were no festivals, but we put it back in for next year's budget. There's $675,000 of those maintenance projects that we touched on yesterday at all the rec buildings, police department. So cumulatively, what we put in the budget for that was 675,000. And those are the items that are in general fund. There were some of the bigger projects we were able to put in SPOLOST. I'm not showing you that because that SPOLOST fund is balanced. These are the items that are in general fund. We also have the 53,000 in Christmas pay that was in the budget. That's the general fund piece. Well, no, that's the whole piece. I'll have to give you the general fund number now that I think about it. The salary study, so this is the increase. So the original salary study, we touched on it yesterday, but in 2018, we did a salary study. They looked at all the positions, compared it to cities of our size or cities that are near us, what, who we would compete with to hire people and how to retain our folks. They came back and said, this is what your pay structure should look like and what that means to bump people up. So we did phase one, which was significant. It affected almost all but six employees in 2018. We capped it at 3,000. Year two, we capped it at 3,000 again, and it was maybe 70-ish employees that were still affected by that. And so now we're at year three and it's roughly 20 employees or so. And when, so we had capped it at 3,000. I met with the finance committee, we talked about what that was and there was a couple of questions of what if we were just done with that in year three so we can move on? And one of the ideas that was thrown out was we could cap it at 10% instead of a flat amount of 3,000. So I plugged that into the budget and that increased the amount that we were going to do for the salary study by 26,000. So that's what that is. That's adding the additional money to not have the $3,000 cap. And then thirdly, the cost of living adjustment is 100,000 and personnel changes that we showed y'all yesterday. Remember, it was adding two positions, removing two positions and upgrading some other positions. That total is 85,000. So that is all I have, but now you can turn your questions over to Tom.
Back to square one.
So let's go back to the beginning.
Yep.
And. You got this all in one slide, huh? All right, so let's talk about some of these individually. We tried to do anything. Well, what?
That's a pretty big.
Here? All right, you ready? You want to take notes?
It's coming and going.
Red pen. All right, so we're going to talk about these in some detail, depending on whether it's something that we want to talk about here or liking a two-by-two. We may have to do that some because of the nature of what we're talking about, but let's talk about water source first. When I got here, we started using a firm to help us evaluate potential. We looked at rivers, lakes, the piping cost, the pumping cost, and we to date have not found a single available source of water that is cost-effective. And when I say cost-effective, what I'm comparing that to is the 4.85 numbers that you just looked at. That being said, the 4.85 number is not cost-effective. So all the water source possibilities are worse, more expensive than buying water from Douglas or buying water from Carroll at the proposed higher rate. And the reason for that is, is either the sources don't exist or where they exist, they're too far away. We've even talked to local folks. For instance, we had a meeting with Carrollton because they have a big water source, which we contribute to, by the way, because that's downstream from us. And Tim told me, well, we're friends, but we're not that good of friends. So we've, we've poked into a bunch of places to see if we can find another source. But we, we are only making 1.3 million gallons a day in our plant. And depending on the time of year, we can, we can average 2 million gallons a day and it may drop to 1.8 in the winter and climb over 2 million in the summer. But even in a good day, you know, we're making 2/3 of our water. So we're buying a third of our water now. The reason that it works for us is because we have a very attractive arrangement with Carroll water.
When does that run out?
March of '25. So the clock is ticking. We have four and a half years in which to do something. So at this point in time, as I stand before you, there are only two possibilities that I'm aware of that I'm pursuing. Don't know if either one of them is practical. We're not that far into it, but they're wrought with political considerations that could derail them. So even in the event that we find a source, it may not be politically possible. But in terms of our future as a community, water independence is, in my mind, the number one strategic goal that we have. Because if we can accomplish that, we will be able to dictate a lot of decisions, make decisions about our future. So let's talk about what the alternatives are. We have an agreement with Douglas that came as a result of our willingness to sign the no annexation agreement. That has turned out to be a dreadful decision because not only did it keep us from doing annexation, but it gave us a contract that was so expensive, we've not bought a single drop of water subsequently in 12 years. So strategically, we need at some point to get out of that annexation constraint.
Okay, addressing the city attorney.
Okay, addressing the city attorney, you're, is that a legal binding on the future councils? What was signed back years ago?
Or did you just provide notice that you're out?
It is binding on you, because it's an intergovernmental contract, and that's treated a little bit differently than just a normal business contract. My, my memory is that there is an opportunity to
David, would you pull your mic up just a little bit?
Yeah, just to go back and repeat that, so it'll be on the record, is that it, it is a legal and binding contract that is binding on the city and on the council. It's a different type of contract, because it is an intergovernmental contract that can be for up to fifty years. And I think this was a fifty-year contract initially. My, my memory, without having it here in front of me, or looking at it, is that there is an opportunity to revisit the agreement every time that there is a revision in the service delivery strategy between Carroll County and, or between Villarica and Douglas County, and the Douglas County Water Authority. So, I think there are some opportunities to revisit the contract that will come up before the end of the contract.
But, they don't have to agree to cancel that part of the contract, though. They can stick with it, can't they?
Before I give you an opinion on that, I don't want to read it and have it in front of me.
Well, and, because that really is a, is a little bit of a side story here. I don't want to get too in-depth with it, but we also know that there are other issues with that contract. We had trouble, A, getting a signed copy. Once we did receive a signed copy, they came on multiple sheets. It was not attested to. There's, there are some problems with the contract, but I don't know that we have to hash that out here. But just for the council's benefit of knowing, there is an opportunity to review, which, which is in the contract. I've read it at the time of SDS agreements. But there are other issues that we might raise if we wanted to do something at a different time. So, the answer is that because it's an intergovernmental, intergovernmental contract, it is binding on future councils, if that's the gist of your question.
Yes.
But whether or not it's a valid contract may be something that we would raise if we chose to do something different. Okay.
Alright, so, what's our contract with Douglas look like? It is a retail price. So, the contract that we have with them is not a wholesale arrangement. A wholesale arrangement would be similar to what we have with Carroll. Right? A rate around two, two fifty, or three dollars a thousand. As we pointed out, four eighty-five is more than we charge our customers. And that is our future. Unless one of several things happen. We find another source, and even if we find another source, we have to upgrade our water plant, because our water plant is the limitation right now. We have a permit for one point five million gallons a day, and can only make one point three. So, that's one way it could go. The other way would be to negotiate a better contract. And right now, I don't see that leverage. In the case of Douglas, they simply do not need us. That water authority is flush with cash. It supports the whole county, Douglasville, Douglas County. It provides water and sewer and stormwater services to the county. They simply do not need us. We are just a gnat on an elephant's behind when it comes to their business. Does that make sense? Now, in the case of Carroll, we're close to being significant. So, if, in Carroll's case, their plant can make eight million gallons a day, so to sell us five hundred thousand gallons is a chunk of their business. They are in the process of upgrading their plant from eight to twelve million gallons a day, and they're doing it because of us. Because what happens in our contract with them is there's no minimum, and the maximum is two point four million gallons a day. So, when we close the plant to clean the basin once a month, we buy all of our water from them for that day. And when we have a drought, and we drop to producing five hundred thousand gallons a day, we buy the balance from them. So, we whipsaw their plant. And if you think about the system, the plant is really not the problem. Their system is the constraint. So, we whipsaw their whole system, because their system is made up of nine tanks. So, when we go from five hundred thousand gallons one day to two million gallons the next day, that unnecessarily complicates the operation of their system, which would normally have a predictable demand, etc. So, if they're selling five million gallons a day to the community, and a half a million to us, that's five and a half out of eight million gallons. But if we buy two million, then they're selling seven million out of eight, and the hair on the back of Matt's neck starts to stand up, because you're getting close to capacity. And in the water business, you don't want to be selling at capacity. Now, in other businesses, you know, you're a fast food place. If you can sell at capacity, then yahoo. But in the water business, you can't say no. So, when people turn on the faucet, they expect water to come out at the right pressure, right? So, the situation that we're in with these guys is not ideal for us, for them. And to resolve this, in my mind, is the biggest issue that we face going forward.
Okay, you say they're upgrading from eight to twelve? How are they doing that? I mean, more tanks, or what?
They're going to upgrade their plant from eight million to twelve million gallons a day, and they're building a reservoir, a second reservoir, which is ridiculously expensive because of the permitting and engineering component, land acquisition. Then you got to pump it, you got to put in a pipe to get it to your plant. I mean, it's, it's a ridiculously expensive endeavor. But you see why they're doing it is because of us. Is because we intermittently push their demand right up against their capacity. And we do it in a contract that is favorable to us.
But that's going to run out.
That's going to run out. And when it does, they're going to offer us a retail rate.
Like Douglas County's rate.
Right? So, that's where we are with that. We can talk some more about that in two by twos as we go forward.
Well, let me just ask you a question. If you know the answer, you're calling this four eighty-five in Douglas County the retail rate. Do you know if that is their retail rate? And let me tell you why before you answer that. I have rental property in Douglas. And I got my first bill for three hundred gallons, and it was ninety-one dollars. I get a lot of phone calls around here about how high our water bills are, but for three hundred gallons, a ninety-one dollar bill, their retail rate is different. So...
Yeah, the rate that we've been quoted is fifteen percent less than whatever their, you know, build rate is.
Okay, so it's slightly below.
Yeah, but it doesn't make, it doesn't make it wholesale.
No, not necessarily, but...
Right. Like, to give you, for instance, Paulding County has a water system that has no water source up until April. So, they just built their first reservoir in the very north end of the county and built a water plant. Prior to that, and even today, they buy their water from Cobb Water Authority at a rate like what we're talking about, two fifty-ish, right? That's, that's a wholesale rate. And if you buy at that rate, you can afford to run your system. Right? Because there's margin between your retail, Paulding's retail rate, and what they're paying Cobb, right? You can do distribution, etc., etc. Alright, the other thing that makes this all better is that the Douglas contract that we've never used requires us to pay a capital component that is equal to a tap fee. So, even if we wanted to buy water from Douglas, we couldn't afford it. Because we, a tap fee for us, our water tap fees are fifteen hundred dollars a customer. So, if we have, let's say that we have two thousand Mirror Lake customers, and we were buying water just for Mirror Lake from Douglas, we would have to pay them a capital contribution of two thousand times whatever their tap fee is. So, in our case, fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay, I've never seen that agreement.
Yeah, that's in, that's in that contract.
Okay.
So, that is, that contract is so untenable that the fact that we signed a no annexation agreement to get it is just incomprehensible. This is a terrible deal for us.
So, I don't know if we're going to get into two by twos. We've talked about whether or not that is what we should do or not. But I mean, the bottom line is, we must have more water source.
Yep.
Whether it be raw source, which is what is the ideal, but, other than that, we're going to have to be able to make an agreement. And what you're essentially telling us today is that no agreement is there to be made in Carroll or Douglas County, and you barely touched on Paulding County.
You mentioned Paulding County in some of our meetings, where we...
Yeah, I mean, their reservoir is on the wrong side of the county.
It's up north.
And the plant, their new plant, their new reservoir. So, another option is to sell the system. So, you have two choices there. You could sell it to Douglas, or you could sell it to Carroll. The difference, the significant difference between the two is that Douglas does sewer, and Carroll only does sewer in Fairfield, and wishes they weren't.
Douglas only does water in one subdivision of Villarica and Mirror Lake, as far as I know.
Douglas provides water in three of our neighborhoods, off of Connors Road and Tyson, in that corner right there. And then we do sewer. Two hundred and forty customers. So, if we, if we wanted to look at just getting out of the business, then Douglas would be the better partner from the standpoint that they do stormwater and sewer also. But what you would effectively be doing is making the decision to raise the rates, and then giving the money to somebody else. Because what they're going to do is raise the rates. Right? They're not going to have a Villarica rate and a Douglas County rate. In fact, how most systems work, including our system, is we have an inside-the-city rate and an outside-the-city rate, and the outside rate's even higher, right?
Yep.
So, if we go do that, and they do that, then you're talking about a rate even higher than their retail rate, which is higher than what we're talking about, which is higher than what we charge now. So, you're talking about, you know, over five bucks a thousand.
There are other, at least one or two other options that we're talking about, that we're not going to talk about here today, because it's so preliminary.
Right.
It's very early. So, one of those have got to work out, or we're going to have to look at increasing our raw water source here. Now, have we talked about seriously dredging, or using Spring Lake, or Cowan? I mean, what kinds of costs are we looking at there?
Yeah, we need to talk about all of that.
Okay. Well, and we don't have to stay on this the whole time, because the truth is, there are things that are options that are very preliminary, that we don't need to talk about here today. And the more we get into this, the closer we're going to get to talking about it.
I was in Petrie City when they sold their water and sewer. They sold it to a private entity, and they regretted it ever since.
Yeah, they have a water sewer already.
It's a bad decision to sell it.
I definitely wouldn't want to mess with Douglas County. I wouldn't want them to get a hold of our water supply. You know, they've always treated us bad.
Alright, so let's, let's talk about the next three. So, what do the next three have in common? Mirror Lake Connector, the second industrial park in the North bypass, all have the potential to be supported by tax allocation districts. So, that's TAD number one, TAD number two, and TAD number three, which is like a Dr. Seuss book. So, the Mirror Lake Connector conceptually originated before me, and it was, as I understand it, a golf cart path. And then it became a road, and then we threw the TAD in there, and then we had the apartment complex on Anderson that came along, and now we've got the Sherner property development potentially. So, that, that project has had all kinds of coming and going since I've been here. We've tried to engineer the road route, and honestly, it just doesn't work well. And this is pre-zoning ordinance change. And the problem is twofold. One is the topo in the water doesn't lend itself well to a road. If you go to Olive Tree and walk out the back door, you're looking north into an area that's wet. So, there's a steep fall and water in that part of downtown, and that's why there's no development and no road there, after what, a hundred and, said, two hundred years, or whatever. So, crossing that is really difficult to get from Clegg Horn back to town. The second problem is that there's only one road that it makes sense to hook to if we're trying to connect Mirror Lake to downtown, and that's North Carroll. Right? So, what's the problem with that road? Is if that becomes a major boulevard, that's the road we close for every event. That's where vendors go. And any of the other roads that are parallel, which would be Stone on the other side of Avante, or this way, that way, not that way, right? That way. None of them take you into a place where you can cross the railroad. Right? Only Carroll and Stone. And the stone crossing is not ideal. So, it's a booger. I mean, we've been trying to figure this route out, you know, for at least two years. And to make it more complicated now, the David Sherner property, which is in front of Shoreline Traffic Light, is potentially going to develop industrial. And if that happens, we would have to push the road design from the middle of the property to the north end or the south end of the property, and neither one of them worked well. And it makes it impossible to tee into the traffic light. Right? You would, you would come from Punkin Town at the light and immediately have to turn. Right? So, you'd have this little stub going west, and then you'd immediately go north or south. So, we're, we're trying to figure that out, but we're out of time, because the apartments are going to break ground in March, which means that on January one, we have to have the land values of that tax allocation district certified by the tax assessor. So, this is it. This fall, we do a redevelopment plan. We, we have the value certified, and we go. So, we're going to keep working on it, but we haven't found, we haven't found a route yet that meets every box on the checklist because of those things. So, questions on that one? Alright, second industrial park. The news is only getting better. The news is only getting better. So.
And by that, he means it's not.
It's not, so our, we have an industrial park that's almost full. One of the, there's basically three potential sites left, the truck stop site, which we just talked about. In the last council meeting. One fifteen acre tract in the top corner against the trailer park. And then if you wanna consider it part of that, then the corner of Rock Mart and Industrial at the three way. So we need another park and I told you, I think, in the meeting about. What our workforce is doing, people coming in and out, I've gone over that with y'all, right? From the traffic study, about the five hundred people and the six thousand people and all that. Anyway, alright, so in the traffic study, one of the things that they included is our traffic patterns. So we have about six thousand people that work every day and five hundred of them work here. So every morning, over five thousand people are leaving Villa Rica. We have seven thousand jobs here, but again, only five hundred of them are being filled by people here, so we have sixty five hundred people that are driving in, so we're doing this every morning. And every evening. In addition, we want the strongest daytime population that we can have, which is, if that, those numbers are correct. Our daytime population is a little better than our nighttime population because we've got more people coming in to work than are leaving. But in order for us to grow beyond a community of starter homes, we need better jobs. Because the people that make the most have the greatest ability to drive. Right, the less you pay, the more economically motivated you are to live close to your job, right, because of transportation issues. So we've worked on a park now for a couple of years. We found land, we took it to the Development Authority, we made full price offers on both parcels. And one of the owners basically reneged on the offer. So we put that on hold. Well, that par- those two parcels would only work for us if two other things happen. One is Alamoore gets built and the second is that we put in a regional lift station. Those two things together would be a nice tax allocation district, right? Because we could use the tax, the bond money to do the sewer. Which would supply Alamoore and supply the industrial park and help us with that sewer problem we have on the east side of sixty one. Last Tuesday, Tuesday a week ago, Bobby and I went to a meeting with the Carroll County Commission Chairman. Chairwoman and two of our commissioners, the two that have parts of Villa Rica. And we presented what we were thinking and we were told in no uncertain terms. That those parcels in their comp plan and land use plan were agricultural. And that they were not gonna fight that fight and that we should look somewhere else. That, it was very, very disappointing. And to piggyback on a conversation yesterday that we sort of avoided. I've only asked Carroll tomorrow to help me with one thing since I've been here and that's it. Is finding and building a second industrial site. In my view, if there's no land, then there's no Carroll tomorrow. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean.
What's your point?
It's like, if you, if you build houses, but you don't have any land to build houses on, you're not much of a builder. Same idea, you know? So our future, again, similar to the whole water issue. If, if we want to become more than just a collection of starter homes, then we've got to grow. We've got to grow numerically and we have to grow our median income. If we want people to come in here and build two and two fifty and three and three fifty and four hundred thousand dollar houses. We've gotta be the kind of community where people with that kinda income want to live, right? So I did not perceive when I watched the last elections that there was a no growth platform. On the part of most of the people that ran in the county. One person that ran for mayor, I felt like ran on a real solid, clear, no growth. Platform and I felt like there was one commissioner that basically said, you know, more cattle, less people. That seemed pretty clear. But the rest of the group that ran, I felt like was pro-business, forward thinking and so Tuesday was a real shock to me. There is not another. Comparable site in Villa Rica or adjacent to Villa Rica that I'm aware of. So that, that kind of assemblage where you start talking about two hundred and fifty acres and up, that's relatively flat. Can be serviced by the interstate or the highways where you can get water and sewer to it cost effectively, they just don't exist here. The land, those easy pieces of property have been built on. So I'd say that whereas Mira Lake Connector is strategically important to downtown. The industrial park might be more important to us strategically as a community. But whether Mira Lake is number two and the park is number three or vice versa. Though, those projects are, I think strategically critical to us.
Let me, let me poke it David for just a second. So what you said was they didn't want to have the fight because their future land use map showed that as.
Agricultural.
Agricultural. But you also discussed that we, through the Development Authority, had made full price offers on this property. One person reneged and therefore we didn't move forward on that. But if the city were to buy those pieces of property, they would be the owners or the Development Authority. Coming in on an annexation would be much easier at that point, right?
If, if it's adjacent to the city, sure.
And it is, and at that point, we're not dealing with the county's future land use map, am I missing something?
No, I think that's correct, if we, if we annex the land in, we have the control. That's, that's right.
Okay.
So remember what this is, Mira Lake Connector is thing one. The park is thing two and the bypass is thing three. So who makes up the TAD? Us, the county and the school system. We all have to cooperate and can, and participate in order for the millage. To be large enough to pay for the bonds. So agreed that we could buy the land and annex it, but then all the county's gotta do is refuse to participate in the bonds. Then we don't have the money for the sewer. Which not only keeps us from doing the industrial park sewer very cost effectively, but it means that we have to fix our sewer problems on the east side of sixty one, your side. Which is way expensive and gets us no additional customers. Whereas if we do something on the west side, we activate a lot of sewer territory.
Seems like to me that there's more political discussion to be had though.
Yes.
Your answer was that they didn't wanna have that fight. Once we take that fight out of their purview, there's another discussion to be had about what happens between the city of Villa Rica and the county, in my view.
Right.
And we would pursue that.
Okay. Why can't we assist Carroll tomorrow, help us once again find, try to find the land?
We're hoping they're watching.
Well, at one time, they had a lot of pieces for us to go look at. One of those is on the southeast side of the city, down Liberty Road.
Right, we talked to them.
Yeah.
There's about four hundred and fifty acres under a single ownership, not selling.
Yeah, he, he.
We've talked to him recently.
He bought up all the land.
Yep. Yep, alright, North Bypass. So the North Bypass also way predates me, it would connect the three way stop at Rock Mart and Industrial to Highway sixty one. Just north of the three way stop at Punkin Town and sixty one. That project, as you know, was funded. Then we were offered the opportunity to change the two terminus points to roundabouts instead of traffic lights. It's on their nickel, we agreed, it delayed the project a year, we, we missed the let date because of it. They pushed. The let date back eight years. Is that right, or six years, I can't remember, but a bunch, whatever, we fussed. They backed it up, we fussed, they backed it up, so I think it's twenty twenty two now. And it just so happens that this morning, there was this eruption of email chatter amongst the staff at G dot. About our project. And basically the question was, where is everybody and can you meet this date? And without me knowing more about it, it looked like everybody. That has responded so far said, yes, it's at one group that might be right on the deadline, but we're talk, we're trying to get to an April of twenty two completion date. Of all the studies and stuff, but land acquisition's done, engineering is just about done. So the things they're doing now are like historic and environmental and, you know, those kinda studies. So that one is still coming along, I am working with Keck and Wood, who's the engineer. On a separate project that y'all have approved back in the day. Maybe six months or a year ago, I don't remember, to look at that area with the intent of doing TAD three. So water, sewer, stormwater, inter parcel roads, the walking trail, you know, how does that area. Develop more than just, you know, G dot building a road, but how does it become something and what is the something? You know, is it industrial, is it commercial, is it commercial retail? So one of the things that I have pushed on them is the idea of building a road north and south from the bypass to Fullerville. So that we have connectivity from the North Bypass to Rock Mart Road, roughly adjacent to the soccer complex. I told you yesterday that when I met with Jody, he needs twice the number of fields that he has. If we were to build a road from the bypass to Rock Mart Road, I would think that that Fullerville complex goes commercial. And that we wind up moving all of our soccer someplace, but we could sell that land to buy and develop. So we're, so we're trying to work through some of those considerations. Related to that, in some ways, it's Punkin Town Road. So if, if it's not bad enough that we got water contracts and annexation contracts and. Topo problems with the road and political problems with the park and G dot to deal with with the North Bypass, now we got Punkin Town. Where we have a safety issue, right? And that is gonna roll onto our plate here in the next budget year, so. It's gonna be probably the top project that comes out of the traffic study. And we're asking for the money to engineer the fix. But the fix, I don't feel like we have consensus for. Because the fix. As I understand it, was similar to a G dot project that got pulled. So there was a point in time, as I understand it, where the North Bypass was a G dot project and Punkin Town was a G dot project. And the city said to the, to G dot, we don't wanna do that and so it's not a project anymore, not, not on their mind. But we have got to fix that road, if you remember David's conversation. You know, we, we're on notice now and we've either gotta fix it or we face some consequences. So that is gonna come up and it's gonna be a multi-million dollar fix. When, when we had coring done, that, we found places where we literally had ten inches of asphalt and no base on that road. So basically, that road has got to be not only. Widened or whatever to be made safer, but it's got to be completely rebuilt from the dirt up when we do it. And you've got all the attendant utility issues that come with that, so. That one is not even in the budget except for the engineering, but we're talking about an amount of money that could be equal to. You know, a, a sixth or a fifth of our whole budget. Depending on how bad it is.
It was the east bypass that got pulled.
Right, which was that.
Yeah, so, um, could we do the east bypass for that kinda money?
No, but I mean, you could still do that, but the difference between us just making Punkin Town safe. And the east bypass was the end of it, the north end of it where it would tee into the North Bypass. So anyway, so we need to have conversations about this also because that, that's a real problem. And that's more acute than some of this earlier stuff that we've talked about because of the safety factor. So questions on that one? I don't blame you. Okay, so now water treatment plant, so we. You know the story on this one, we, we started looking at the engineering. We realized that, that the floodplain maps had been changed and the plants in the, in the floodplain, we talked to. Print Pack, who owns the land across the street below the dam. We, I think, could probably work a deal with them to buy that land. It's not great for them because it's got pretty severe elevation change in it and it sits below the dam, right? Which is not where you'd wanna build a building. And we can use the topo to our advantage, the topo change. Because what that lets us do within the plant is move water from one function to the next without pumping it, because you've got the ability to. Make everything, take advantage of the gravity. So that, that's where we are with that and then whether we go that route or not depends, again, back on the water source issue. So when we get together and talk, we'll sorta try to tie those, those two together. Alright, does anybody wanna take a break?
That number on the water treatment plant you threw out a couple of meetings ago, eighteen million, is that still?
That was a new plant.
New plant.
A new plant on the, on the Print Pack side.
Okay, let's.
And, and not a duplication of what we have, it'd be like a three MGD plant.
Okay, the piece of Punkin Town Road we, we gotta work on, that's in Carroll County, not Douglas County.
That's right.
All Carroll.
All Carroll.
Any way we use splash money on that road?
Yeah, we, we can talk about splash when we get down to the end of these. Because splash. Is a finite amount of money and it's spread over six years, so it's not like you can just say, hey. You know, let's build a city complex with splash and let's do Butterballs with splash and let's do soccer with splash because splash isn't that big. Plus you'd have to wait six years. You know, so splash is not that, you know, splash is great, but it's not the answer to all of our issues.
Alright, let's take a five minute break.
Alright, let's take a five-minute break. Does Alyssa need to turn anything off in there, Joel? Okay, you got it.
Is it any good?
Thank you.
No.
What they're talking about now, Stephanie probably already knows.
Didn't seem appropriate. And so if we have that in mind, then two years from now would be the earliest and then two years after that to consider a geo bond. Now, in my experience, I've seen sort of two competing tensions in a geo bond. My, the first is, is that what I've seen in the ones that have been successful is they focused on recreation. And what I've seen in the ones that have failed is they focused on roads. Now, that may be a little different here because of the traffic issues. But that's what I've seen in, in the other communities that I've worked in that have tried them. What, what we are challenged with is when you take the water projects and the sewer projects and the road projects and these building projects and recreation projects and you put them all together, you're talking about tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars. And if our general fund is fourteen million and we even scrape out a half a million or a million in a year to spend on facilities and we get a million a year on roads. We would just never get to these because your, your, your maintenance needs would grow as fast as, as that money would, um, improve things. So you basically just be treading water. The Golden Nugget Trail, I don't think we should borrow money for. But Butterballs maybe, the municipal complex for sure, recreation for sure. Whether we can do it for roads or not remains to be seen, but Punkin Town definitely is a, a candidate. But if we're gonna do a geo bond for that, that means we don't start working on Punkin Town for two and a half years. Which, I'll let David weigh in on that, but that doesn't sound like a plan to me.
I don't want to hear that.
All right, so let's go back through these and talk about what, what it means. Let's talk about Avante first. So Avante's a great big old building, thirty-two feet high, I think, and it's, I can't remember if it's eighty thousand square feet or what it is, but it's a big ol' hulk of a building. Needs a new roof, the sewer system in it doesn't work well up front, which we've talked about yesterday. And my vision for that building initially was, and it's gone and we, you know, redo something. But as I've started going around the places in Atlanta that are, you know, doing adaptive reuse, there, you could do some really cool things in that, in that shell. It's so tall that you could do two floors, so you could have a retail floor and a residential floor, or even two residential floors, depending on how high the commercial part was at the bottom. You could keep part of it open and have part of it closed. So it's got a lot of potential. A, a complicating factor is that the mill is turned the wrong way. So if you took the Avante building down, you couldn't expand the mill, right? Because the mill goes into South Carroll, right? Not, not down the hill. So that wouldn't really help that. So if we think about reusing the building, maybe we have to relocate the amphitheater. If you think about that, the land behind the olive tree is a natural amphitheater. Right? Wouldn't have to excavate or do a lot of topo. And if you did it up on the top where it's flat or you could do parking behind the olive tree and then got the idea. So anyway, we'll talk about that some more. But if we reuse Avante and we figure out how to do the, the trail and the Mirror Lake Connector and we do Butterballs. My thought is that we won't see the, a municipal complex to stay in downtown, but be at least a block off of the main road, if not two blocks. So we don't wanna use frontage, right? For the municipal complex, we don't want it on seventy-eight. And you also don't want it in the TAD because it's not gonna generate any property tax for the bonds for the TAD. Which may mean that we have to move it to the south side of the road somewhere. That make sense? Off of seventy-eight and not in the TAD. Um, we also have the issue of what to do with Main Street, which is this. That is a terrible intersection, like a world-class, terrible, small-town intersection that we need to resolve. So we, we, we're still waiting for somebody to come in here. I'm waiting on somebody to come in here with an idea that we all go, that's brilliant. But it hadn't happened yet. But until then, I don't, I don't see the solution to that intersection. Uh, moving PD would give us more options. So for this, for this to become part of the municipal complex and go someplace would give us, I think, more options for that. So let's talk about splosh. We talked about geo bonds. So splosh comes in two pieces. Let's say rough numbers, we're getting a hundred thousand dollars a month from each, six years. So we're talking about seven point two million each over six years, so fourteen million in six years. So you're talking about, you know, two and a half million dollars a year, roughly. And it's growing, or was until COVID. So I don't know that much or any of that is gonna come out of splosh. One, I don't know that we're gonna wanna wait that long. Even if it's voted on in March, I don't know that we're gonna wanna wait until the next one to do some of these. And two, every year that goes by, we're thinking of more stuff to do. So I don't know if you feel that, but in my three years, you know, the first year we had a list of stuff and then the second year we added a bunch of stuff to it and the third year we added a bunch of stuff to it. And now, you know, it's every year we're, we're getting a clearer picture of what our vision is and how the town could redevelop and what we wanna do.
Splosh is for capital. So if you bought land, you could take out a loan for it and use splosh to pay the loan off as, as it came in. So you, you, you can.
Right.
But you, you have to, you have to make that decision actually before the splosh comes up so that you know what you're gonna do with that kind of money.
Yeah, we could even issue bonds for the whole seven million at the very beginning and pay the bonds back.
Cause that's what the education splosh typically do.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
You, you, you do have to tell the voters that you're gonna do that before, before the vote?
Yep. All right.
Okay, before you get off of this one, um, City Hall, we're now calling municipal complex. Have we got any good ideas as to where to put that? Cause we, if we have some ideas of where we wanna put it, we oughta be trying to purchase enough land to put it there.
Yeah.
That should be atop the list.
I will say again that if it was up to me, we would buy land everywhere we could buy land in the areas that we're talking about doing things. I, we went to Sugar Hill, for instance. And what did we hear them tell us? They bought all that land, they controlled what went there, they built their city built, their, their city hall, they built the amphitheater, they built that multipurpose facility, mixed use. They built the gymnasium, they were controlling the hotel site, all because they owned the land. Um, we went to Covington Thurs- last Thursday. Councilman went with us, uh, councilwoman McPherson went with us, staff, members of, uh, Main Street. And we were hosted by the economic development rep for Newton County. In their case, Newton County and Covington work together just like this on economic development, unlike what I shared with you from last Tuesday. So that Tuesday, Thursday was you know, no growth, more cattle, less people to Newton County's philosophy, which is, you ready for this? This is their county philosophy. Zero percent unemployment, no poverty. That's their two goal, that's their two organizational goals. Am I, am I getting that right? You were there.
Yeah, through jobs, through job creation, yes.
Totally different approach than, than what we're seeing here. They bought, as I understand the story, Newton County and the two adjoining counties bought land on the east end of the county, which would be the, the far end, right? Away from Atlanta, in the nineties and just land banked it for decades. And one of the developments that they have put in that land now is a three million square foot Facebook data center that will be the biggest electric customer in the state. And they're a MEAG city, Covington is. And they have an EMC out there, so it's not all Georgia power territory. But that, you see the foresight in that? And I've told you this story before, uh, individually, probably not here. But when I was in East Point, I worked there the first time in eighty, the mid eight, mid to late eighties. And my boss was a, um, city manager named Joe Johnson, who was pretty visionary himself. And he went to the council and talked them into annexing the land outside of two eighty-five cause up to that point, East Point was all inside the perimeter. Outside the perimeter at Camp Creek Parkway, both sides of the road, terrible land. One side was nothing but creeks and wetland and the other side was solid rock. Just awful, awful land, which is why it was, you know, a couple of miles from the airport undeveloped still after, you know, all those decades. And they agreed, they annexed that land in the, in the, um, whenever, in the eighties. So in ninety-nine, I had a chance to go back there and do some work. And then in two thousand and two, I got to go back again. And, um, during that time, American Properties had purchased those, the north side, the rock site. And Duke Realty had purchased the south side, the, the wet site. And East Point had done a TAD and issued bonds. And they used the bond money to mitigate the rock, basically blast and remove, you know, to, to grade. They mitigated the water, they put in utilities, and what is that today?
A lot of traffic.
Camp Creek Marketplace and the Duke Realty Industrial Park. Because of his foresight, and if it'd been up to Joe, they, he would've annexed all the way to, to, uh, Fulton Industrial out Camp Creek. But they, they didn't, the council couldn't see it, you know, back then.
There's still, there's a good bit of development between there and, and Fulton Industrial now, but
Yeah.
Not nearly as much as at, at Camp Creek.
Nope.
But the city has, has purchased seventy-five acres on the northwest side, which we don't really have a use for yet, but the bypass is gonna go through the northern part of it.
We haven't, we haven't bought too much land.
I, I know, I'd like to have bought more, but we at least bought that much of it.
Yep. So what happened to the guy that built Camp Creek Parkway? That built, uh, Camp Creek Marketplace, North American Properties? What'd they do next when they sold it? They bought Atlantic Station.
Oh.
Right? And then what'd he do? Avalon. Y'all familiar with Avalon? Up four hundred and then Alfreda? Right? So I mean, those opportunities are out there and I'm telling you, it was utterly undevelopable land that was made developable because of a TAD. What was Atlantic Station? How did it get built? It's a TAD, it's the biggest TAD in Georgia to date. So there, I think there's a lesson in that. The question is what and where, because as David and I were talking during the break, this situation to me is utterly overwhelming. That first slide is a butt kicker. And I think that the, that the irrational response to it is paralysis. Cause it's just so much, I mean, it's, it's like, nobody's on our side. And if we don't do something, we see bad consequences rolling down the r- road, you know? From multiple fronts. The water in downtown and the roads and the quality of life and what happens in recreation, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, comments, questions about any of that? That's my soapbox for buying land.
We, we don't have any organization within the city that looks at that, purchasing land per se and comes up with a, a strategic plan as to what we would like to do when the money becomes available. We just have you and your staff and the city council and it's, that's it.
It's pretty thin.
Well, it feels thin to me.
Yeah, it's over, do you not feel overwhelmed?
Carol tomorrow was helping us, Carol tomorrow was working with us to help find some land.
No, they said they were, but they got no results.
Or the Development Authority in general.
We kinda lost them somewhere along the way. So why, why, why should we dedicate money to Carol tomorrow if they're not gonna help us out?
All right, so let's look at, let's look at this slide. So what did we say a year ago about, about getting out of this mess? We're gonna grow our way out and what we wanna do is add a thousand people a year through twenty twenty-five, at least, which would give us two thousand new utility accounts. So let's talk about the arithmetic. A thousand people at two and a half persons per housing unit means that we're building four hundred units a year. So for us, what does four hundred units look like? Four hundred units would be two hundred and fifty houses and a hundred and fifty apartments every year for five years. Just for us to get securely to eight thousand accounts and twenty thousand people. Now, what's traffic gonna be like if we do that? Better?
Depends on if we plan for it correctly.
It's not gonna be better. Not based on anything we're talking about doing. The north bypass is not really gonna make the residential part of what we're doing better. Will the, will the roundabouts? The roundabouts may help some. But there's a huge number of people coming into Villa, coming through Villarica in the morning from Paulding, South Paulding. And that roundabout's gonna help, but it's not gonna reduce the number of people. And is South Paulding growing or not growing? It's growing, right? So you got construction in South Paulding, those people are, can't get to the, there's no interstate in Paulding County, so they gotta get out on the state highway some way. Sixty-one, right, down Punkin Town. It's only gonna get worse.
They'll take, they'll probably take the bypass to get to I twenty rather than.
They could. What's that gonna do in industrial? You know, the sixty-one, seventy-eight intersection, what that's, what's that gonna be like?
That's why we need the east bypass.
Yep. But anyway, you see where we're headed. It's even in our efforts to get out of this, we're gonna make some of the problems worse. We're gonna put more demand on our water and sewer system. Definitely gonna tax the roads. PD is gonna be impacted. That's where we're headed.
Twenty thousand people is double.
We hired you for these solutions, when you gonna give us our solutions?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're creating more problems.
We didn't hire you to create problems, we wanted solutions.
Yep. Yep. What we're doing is identifying problems with no obvious fix.
But will only get much more worse, much more complicated.
Mm, over time.
Left unaddressed.
No, we can't kick the can down the road any further, o- otherwise.
Yeah, this isn't a can anymore. This is, this is becoming a fifty-five gallon barrel that's gonna roll over you and crush you. Yep. But why are people moving here? Cause people are moving here. If you look around, I'm still talking to Peggy and Terry when they go out and do inspections. There are very few houses under construction that make it to a, a real estate listing. Very few. I see a, I saw, I looked the other day and there were two or three houses under construction and replantation that were listed and that's it. So of all the dozens of houses that are being built, they're either pre-sold or selling during construction and never making it to a listing. So it's not like we're seeing dozens of spec homes being built. I mean, people are buying houses as we build them in neighborhoods all over Villarica. So why? I mean, why do you think people are coming here?
Get away from the cities. They don't feel safe in the cities, they don't, they don't, they're not getting their money's worth. You know, the city's more expensive and the, the services they offer aren't, aren't what they want. They don't want those schools, they want county or, or, or local schools.
I can only tell you why we came. We came down here cause it was a small city, Villarica, nice, small community. And we wanted to get out of Cobb County, which had twelve subdivisions since we had built a house in seventy-five. So they were building like crazy, so we wanted to get away from it. We came south. And now we're down here with the same problem.
Relative affordability compared to what you get elsewhere.
Yeah, so one of my concerns is that we're enjoying the benefit of housing construction on cheap lots, which we've talked about. The lots that we're building on were developed in seven and eight. And they're cheap, they went into foreclosure, the banks dumped them and they may have, you know, flipped several times and escalated in price. But that, I don't believe that the builders that we're watching right now are building on full-price lots, right? But then, but when we get through with this, we're gonna see a jump in cost for the builder. Cause they're gonna have to build lots from scratch, new roads, new water, new sewer, new stormwater as opposed to these recession depressed prices.
So in order to get people to buy those, we're gonna have to offer services comparable to higher dollar value homes.
I think so.
But there, there is a fundamental truth that is going on, that has been going on for a while. And that is, I've been in the real estate market, uh, business for a long time. And that is that, and, and, and I, I'm not gonna be as articulate as I'd like to be, but we are very gullible here. We still sell our property very cheap. We still try to keep everything as low cost as we possibly can. And the people up north, they've already been through this, they went through it fifty and seventy-five years ago. They're gonna come down here and buy all of our property and they're gonna develop what they wanna develop and then they're gonna own the place. If we don't start getting very serious about what we're doing here, instead of just trying to do everything as cheap as we possibly can and just make it to the next day. That's really what, what has gone on for so long. It's left us completely vulnerable to outsiders coming in and taking over what we have here. When you talk about a small community, I grew up here. I know it's a small community, but I have seen this place change in ways that I couldn't have ever imagined. And now here today, we are charged with doing the right thing and planning for the future. And that's what we're gonna have to do. Every time I see somebody come in and buy up a piece of property to build some new development on it, I realize we just gave that away to them. I was sitting in the airport last Thursday getting ready to leave and I got an offer for some crazy amount of money that most people would probably take instantly. But that property is worth a lot more than that. I don't intend to give it away. But around here, when you see those kinds of numbers, people instantly think, my goodness. You know, I'm gonna get rich. But actually, your stuff is worth a lot more than that. Villarica is a hidden sort of gem. We've sort of kept people out by being very closed, but they're coming anyway. And they're gonna come whether you like it or not. But what they're gonna do is buy this place for free, essentially, and then they're gonna own it. If we don't get very serious about what we're doing around here and take control of this place and take control of our own destiny. And that's just the truth.
We are not in control. You look at the water, the annexation, our relationship with the railroad, with G-DOT. We are not in control. And whatever leverage we develop only helps us. But right now, I don't see a lot of that. All right, we going on?
Question, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we've talked about, we're currently building the infill lots, the, uh, the pre-recession lots. We're feeling that, you know, they're the ones that are getting built out. But have we seen any percolation of interest for the, the, the lots that are not the recession lots, a new development? I mean, I know we talked a lot about the zoning ordinance, we gotta get the zoning ordinance passed and we had a lot of, you know, I think Chris maybe said it once or twice that there are some developers out there, but I just haven't seen, I mean, what can you tell us about that?
Every, everybody that we're dealing with right now is a builder.
And they're proposing new.
We're not, we're not dealing.
Housing developments.
We're not dealing with more than one or two people that I would consider a developer.
Okay.
Right? So the guys that are here are, you know, building houses in Dogwood Trace, they're building houses in Brandywine, they're building houses in Reed Plantation, Augusta Woods, Summer Gate.
Mm-hmm.
Twin, Twin Oaks, right? Liberty Point. We, we built out, you know, Towns and Village, Old Town Village.
But we're not having, we're not having conversations with developers to.
Only, I've only had one recently, so we're, we're not there yet. We still gotta build out Charleston Place, so somebody's gonna have to buy the third phase of that land. And Bill, Summer Gate's got a whole nother phase that nobody's bitten off. Um, water, Water Mist in South Harbor and Mirror Lake, which are higher-end neighborhoods. Still have a lot of lots that are, you know, y- yet to get active in North Woods. Okay, so you still have about five neighborhoods. But given the number of builders, I mean, we might have ten builders active here at one time, you know, bringing in seven and ten permits at a time and building. You know, but that's gonna dry up here before too long unless we do some new neighborhoods. And I'm not seeing interest in that yet.
And that, that, that was your question, right, about?
Right.
A developer.
So when you think about Mirror Lake, so one of the, the goals that, that we had as a city and that I certainly had was to fill up all of the subdivisions that were sort of left behind when the, in the crash. And we've done a lot of that. But when you think about Mirror Lake, there are, you talked about Waters Mist, but Waters Mist is actually more raw land that is gonna have to be developed. So if you think about development, that is new development. There are two other sections before you get to North Woods that are also still trees and raw land that haven't been developed, but they're all part of Mirror Lake. Mirror Lake, when developed out, has potential for another over one thousand, uh, lots. Only, only South Harbor and. is South Harbor the only one that is currently not just raw land? I mean, it has a road through it, but it still hasn't been platted. Even that hasn't been platted. So we're moving toward that is, is, is the point, but there are still places, Summer Gate and Charleston Place, where you still have development.
Let's talk about the three that are real. So the three that are real are Avamore, right? The land off, south of Connors between Carrington and Hawthorne. So that's a town home condo development. And the land south of Connors, east of Nally, so the last parcel in the city. You know that one? So on the other side of the falls.
Right.
Those are the three where I know that there's development activity, but nobody turning dirt. Right? This is all engineering stuff. And then you've got two apartment developers. So you've got Arbor Valley on Clegg Horn, you've got Walton on sixty-one doing the Housing Authority project. And then you've got commercial stuff. You've got the Tanner Assisted Living Building, you've got the, you know, on Connors, you've got the personal care home across from the hospital. So I mean, there's, there's some stuff going on, but not at the scale of Mira Lake and sixty-one, which is the two places where most of the houses have been built since I've been here. All right, so we've talked about water, 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 water. So in this budget, there is not a recommendation to raise water rates or sewer rates, base or volume, because our focus is on the millage. Right? My, under, my impression from previous budget discussions is the appetite for doing all of that at one time is nil. So it's not even in here. Now, there's a philosophy, and we could, I could do this if you think this is more effective, of me just asking y'all for everything and then y'all paring it all back, but to me, that's just, takes everybody's time. Right? So I'm, I'm only focusing on one, which is the millage. I've showed you the numbers in the past, but this one is not going away. Right? We're gonna have to address this. So one of two things is gonna happen. We're gonna raise the rates ourselves because our costs are gonna go up. Or if we sell the system, the rates are gonna go up because they're gonna make our rates the same as their rates or more. But the rates are going up. It's just a matter of time. Five years from now, our rates are not gonna be what they are today. So the question is, do we want to raise them and control what goes on, or do we want somebody else to raise them and us have no say?
Like I was in my first term, I'm not willing to sell out somebody else, let them control the city. Which Tobago's kinda know back then, that's why they jacked up the price on us. And that's also why they did the annexation claims after I left the council.
Yep. The only thing that's gonna give us leverage in those contracts is if we have the ability to be independent of them. But if we need them, then they have the leverage. And right now, that's the case. Okay, so we talked about the rate, we talked about the capital investment. All right, so Pete and I went and met with Matt a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. And what I have been pitching to Matt, it is an equity partnership in the authority. So instead of us selling our system to Carroll Water, what I'm interested in is us making a capital investment into their system in order to negotiate a future contract with a wholesale rate. Does that make sense? And I have been rebuffed each year that I've tried that, so that's not gotten me anywhere. But that middle line is where we're headed in four and a half years. So if you think about our cost, it costs us about a buck seventy-five to make a thousand gallons of water. And that's in our current state with no debt on the water system. When we build whatever we're gonna build and we take on debt for the water plant, you're gonna add a couple of dollars, a thousand, to our cost. So our costs are going up even if we negotiate a better contract because of the condition of the plant. Same thing that happened in sewer. So our cost of producing water is cheap, but it's because we have no debt. It's sort of like, how much does it cost you to live if all you're doing is paying utilities and your mortgage is paid for? It's a whole different game. If you live in a house that's utilities only, it doesn't compare to the cost of living in a house where you have a mortgage and utilities. Right? Well, right now, we're, our water system's living in a house with no mortgage, and that's about to change. So even if we do Jifa, and even if we get Water First, and even if the money's cheap, it's still gonna be a couple of dollars, a thousand, for the debt. So that's where we're headed. We'll have that conversation again next year.
But the production cost could go down slightly from, from one seventy down to one fifty?
Not at our vol, our volumes aren't gonna slide enough. Like if we were making, you know, a hundred MGD a day, you know, maybe there'd be some savings, but the, you know, the big chunk of the expense is the labor, so you gotta have a, an expanded base of volume to make that salary, you know, drop. All right, so let's look at the rates again. We, we did a great job on sewer. We did a two-year adjustment. We've raised it to seventy-five percent. We started building cash. We made the big jump in the debt payment in February of this year. We didn't have a parade or anything, but in the history of Villarica, I'd say that that was one of the best things that's happened in Villarica ever. Was raising those rates and being able to pay that debt payment and having cash in the bank. Not subsidizing water and sewer out of the general fund. You know, y'all, I don't know that y'all pat yourself on the back any, but that was a real accomplishment, given the history of Villarica, in my view. So on the water side, we've done seven plus five, which is just a little bit more than twelve combined. So we need to do another, whatever that is, seven or so to get where, to get to where Raph Telus was recommending, and remember that that was two or three years ago. Seventeen, so that's a three-year-old number, too. And it doesn't include the debt that we're talking about, so that water number's only gonna go up over time. All right, so now we're down to millage. And in my view, this decision that y'all are gonna make next Tuesday needs to take into account what, everything we just talked about, and not just for today. You need to think about this in terms also of the GO bond. If we're gonna do a GO bond one day, it is gonna be paid for by a separate millage. So when that day comes, y'all are gonna set millage twice. You're gonna set what's called an M and O millage, which is this, maintenance and operation. And you're gonna set a GO bond millage, which will generate just enough money to make, make that year's debt payment. Right? Because you're gonna have a debt payment on the bonds, just like we do on the sewer plant today. We advertise at six and a half because you can only approve a rate up to the advertisement. You can approve below it, but not above it. So we rate, we set it at six and a half to give us room to do whatever. What we're recommending is six and a quarter. But in, no matter what we do, we're gonna advertise an increase and have to do public hearings for an increase at anything greater than the rollback, which is? Five point four eight eight. So that would be the revenue neutral rate. It's the rate at which we would get no benefit from reappraisal. We would still get the benefit from growth, but not reappraisal. And as I understand it, the Carroll side of this operation raised their appraisal structure from sixty-five dollars a square foot to seventy-five. So that's one of the things that's happening in the Carroll bills that are going out. Is there's a, there's a, a fundamental dollar increase in there. We talked about the value of a mill. So now we get down to, to this decision, which we don't have to make today, but Sarah's gonna be in a, in a position where she can't produce the book until we resolve some of this, but there's so much money needed for maintenance that we're gonna have to cut some of that, right? We just, we can't do everything next year that we've identified. And I don't see how we do Butterballs next year, right? So I think to get to, to get to, what is it, one point five something? Almost one point six million in cuts. We gotta cut Butterballs and we gotta cut part of the maintenance. And then what you do with the rest of that is up to y'all. We didn't bring you many personnel changes. There's not a lot of fleet in the budget, but the COLA's in there, which is one and a half percent. There, you know, there, I think there's a good reason to do it, but if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. The salary study, we, we've been doing three thousand a year in implementation. If you wanna do more than that, I could argue that. If you only wanna do the three, I could argue that. Uh, Christmas pay, we had this conversation, what, about ten months ago, and I think one of our council members said, in the budget next year, right? So it's in the budget, but dang, you know, it doesn't fit good. We got the possibility of paying for it out of the self-funded, self-insurance fund, and maybe that's the way we go. So, conversation, questions, thoughts?
Let me ask you first, uh, for the Pumpkin Town, uh, road engineering, ours. Do, is that money in here already? Okay.
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so these two pages are items that, uh, you've identified as potentially up for cuts. So let me just sort of summarize where we're at. In this budget, we are short almost one point six million dollars. If we keep the millage rate at its current level, which is five point seven four three, that would be three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars additional coming into the general fund or into the city's accounts.
Yeah, I, I calculate three sixty-five.
The six and a quarter's in the budget.
Oh, the six and a quarter is already in the budget? Okay. All right, that's a little different. So we are one point six million dollars short, assuming that we were to raise the rate to six and a quarter. Now that is a horse of a different color.
So if you drop it back down to five point seven four three, then we go to two million dollars short.
Yeah, one point, one point nine billion, basically.
Okay, and we're gonna adopt a millage rate on the twenty-fifth?
Next Tuesday.
August twenty-fifth? What are you looking for today, Sarah, in order for you to prepare the books?
So the biggest thing is getting the millage adopted next week. That plays into what the book can look like anyway. That was the point of why we kinda rushed having these workshops. So the millage has to be turned in by the end of August. We don't have to adopt the budget till the end of September. I mean, that's the goal, the end of September. So we still have time to work the budget. But the biggest thing is, um, millage. And then if y'all have any strong feelings about the items that we've presented today, you know, I'd like to be able to make changes as we can so that I can start getting us down to that balanced budget.
Right off the bat, I'd like to personally slide Butterballs down a year, get it out of this year. That's a million dollars.
I'm not, uh, I'm not comfortable with letting that building just sit there for another year with nothing being done. Is there any middle ground on this million dollars? I mean, is there something, we talked a little bit about possibly doing away with the-
Doing just the exterior, we talked about, remember?
Well, we talked a little, yeah, we did. We talked a little bit about possibly just leveling the duplexes as well. Where, where could we get to if we just fixed the exterior of the building in this budget? Could you come up, could you look at that? So let's keep in mind that she is, the way this is put together is already based on six and a point two five mills. So when you start cutting, we need to cut one point six million dollars from this budget, assuming that we're at six point two five. If we're gonna be below that, we need to cut more. If we're gonna be above it, we, we can cut a little less. So I don't think, it, it, let's have other people weigh in on this. I don't think anybody is in favor of just leaving Butterball sitting there and not spending any more money or time on it right now. Is that, am I right?
No, I agree with that. If we can just at least not make it look an eyesore.
What could we do the outside for, Tom? Do you know?
No, but I, we can figure it out.
Okay. I mean, I understand we're not gonna pass the budget yet, but I'm trying to get the, the mindset going here about where we're gonna be on this millage rate. So that then we can start talking about what the cuts are gonna be to balance the budget, and she can proceed with what she's doing. If we can. I mean, if we can't, we can't, but we need to have the, some discussion about e- each person's feelings, I think, on this rate at, at six point two five, because we're just shooting in the dark if that's not gonna be a number that we can work with.
We're, we're just flat ignoring the pandemic and the effects it's had on the people of Villarica, is what we're doing. If we start hitting them with a tax increase.
Okay.
So I feel a little extreme myself.
I have a question. Um, this is actually not about Butterballs, though, if we're ready to move on from that.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I wanna talk about the rate.
Okay, yeah, I mean, well, this is just on these possible cuts. So we talked a little bit yesterday about pulling the Christmas pay from insurance savings. And I guess my takeaway was, and I don't wanna, but what if, I mean, is it possible to, the salary study or the COLA, not both, but one or the other, to pull at least for one budget year, that out of, out of the insurance savings? Because it sounded like we have six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars in insurance savings. Our yearly exposure's potentially up to, because we budgeted the ninety percent level, so there's about two hundred thousand dollars. So it sounds like we've got three to four years in savings of potential exposure, if you view it that way. What are y'all's thoughts on that?
Now, I, to, if, if that can be paid out of that, and if we, we've got the, the floor or, you know, the, the, the limit already in reserve for that, how much money is in that account? Is it about seven hundred thousand?
It's over seven hundred thousand.
Okay. And how much do we need as far as our potential exposure? I know we talked about it yesterday, but our highest potential exposure next year is?
Hundred and seventy, hundred and sixty.
Okay. I would be comfortable with, with that if it helped. Did, does staff have a, uh, an opinion on that? On taking either the, or both even, the COLA or the salary study out of the insurance savings? I mean, part of the reason we're saving money is for this kind of stuff. As long as we're not attempting to bankrupt the system.
The problem is-
It's repeat, gonna repeat.
Yes. It's, you're building a fixed cost for next year. So I don't know if Tom said this today, we talked about it yesterday a little bit. So I don't know if Tom said this today, we talked about it yesterday a little bit. Um, you know, part of the millage is, is not just the decision ma- you make this year, it's the cumulative effect. You know, he's shown you this, the money that we could've gotten if we hadn't lowered the rate so much every year over the last twenty years, except for the one year. Um, so the decision you make this year affects us going forward, too.
I, I was thinking about that, not so much in terms of the, the millage rate. I'm thinking that we gotta cut one point six million dollars regardless of the rate. Well, if we keep it at six and a quarter, I, I heard what Danny said, but I didn't think that that's what Matt was getting at.
Well, I mean, and I, and I, and I totally get that. Well, now we're committed. So if we do that in twenty twenty-one, if we do the salary study and the COLA, we're now committed in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
Right.
And so forth to do that, but my anticipation would be that we'd be in a better place in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, that where we could balance it better, that we would have, you know, hopefully we won't have a COVID situation, that we're lost revenues from Parks and Rec and other items in the budget would balance out, and we would be kinda back on the train that we were last year and the year before and so forth. So, uh, you know, maybe I'm just kinda being an optimist, but I was looking to find a way to kinda get it through this year. That was, that was my notion.
One shot deal.
Right.
I think the danger is that when you start spending out of savings, sometimes it gets hard to stop.
You mean like Congress and Social Security?
Exactly.
So the same, so the argument that we were making yesterday for why we want police cars to be paid out of general fund instead of SPOLOST is that very argument. Is you, if you get it into the, the general fund, you're gonna have general fund revenue every year. But if you pay for it out of SPOLOST and you lose SPOLOST.
Then you're where we are today.
Then, then you gotta go just beat the general fund up to get three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out that you haven't been paying.
But if you pay for it out of SPOLOST one year and then, then you lose it, then you switch over to the general fund. You have another, we plan each, each budget year gets planned out.
But if you keep cutting back on the general fund revenue, which is largely the, this millage rate, I think that that's where you, over time, that's how you end up right here.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about in my, maybe my second year here was what does subsidizing water and sewer do? So one of the things it does is it ma- is you subsidize it at a subsistence level. So you don't give them any extra money. So you don't do maintenance, you don't do capital improvements, you just operate. But the other thing that it does that I didn't really think about, cause I'd never seen it up close before, is it also makes your general fund operate at a subsistence level. So you don't do any capital improvements or maintenance there. Which last year, I talked about the Fram oil filter commercial. That's that bottom line right there. Is after three years, I think we finally have worked on our buildings and grounds long enough to have a feel for what the number is. And that's the Fram oil filter number. Is, but all those years, we weren't doing roofs, we weren't doing HVAC systems, we weren't doing roads, parking lots. And, and it's caught up with us. Scoreboards that don't work, restrooms that need to be rebuilt, all over the place. And so we're there. I mean, we, we've, we didn't necessarily kick the can the last three years, but we have quantified the consequence of all the years of doing it, and that's it. And again, I don't think we should do all that in one year. I'm not even sure that the staff could even manage that many projects, but that's what the number is. And that doesn't include laser grading, the ball fields, which is twenty-five grand a piece. So that's a quarter of a million dollars. Um, we've got LED light conversions that we'd like to do, that we haven't done. That's another big chunk of money. Roads is n- never gonna end.
It's, it's gonna come down, the reality is, we gotta put a priority on them and take them from the top down. Obviously, there's not enough money to go around. Somewhere along the way, we, we've done this before. We had a get-together and we set priorities on these items. Was that last year we did that?
So on Tuesday, we have another, uh, millage rate hearing.
We have a hearing at eleven and at six.
And then at six, we will set the rate. Okay. Does, uh, does anybody else wanna weigh in on this discussion?
There are, there are only eight items listed for, in the general fund for possible cuts. I, I know, of course, you got a lot of stuff. Maintenance is got from a, a lot of different departments and things like that, and then.
We pulled out some of the bigger ticket single items.
Because the small stuff would take three hundred items to, to make any kinda money.
Yes, yeah, we have over two thousand general ledger accounts or something, so.
Is, is this list of, of eight items in priority order?
No. And like you said, that maintenance, that six hundred seventy-five thousand, you know, physically might not be able to do all that next year anyway. So there is room there that we could trim back. Not that it doesn't need to be done, but, you know, pushing it out of here.
You only get so much work done in one year.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else? Sarah?
No.
Tom, do you have anything else? David? Anybody on the council?
Got a lot to think about.
Got a lot to think about and a lot of decisions to make in come Tuesday morning. I hope that we're prepared to do that. Let's keep in mind that, uh.
Tuesday morning?
Well, Tuesday morning, we're gonna discuss it again, and I hope some decisions. Uh, we'll see.
Yeah, y'all can talk about it Tuesday morning in the public hearing.
We could talk about it then, or have public hearing and then talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, then, uh, we will adjourn this, uh, budget work session.
Thank you.